Good evening and welcome to the San Bruno City Council Regular Meeting of August the 27th.
Talazar?
Here.
Mayor Rico Medina.
Here. If you'd all please rise if you're able and join me in the pledge this evening. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we start on public comment, I want to say something. I have a prep meeting that I have on Tuesdays with the attorney and the manager. And it was made, was told of an incident that occurred on last Thursday at San Bruno City Hall. So my understanding is now this is the second time that we've had someone when there are a group of peaceful protesters who are gathered in front of City Hall having their right to do and communicate what is important to them, which is our First Amendment. And we had somebody that drove by, this is what I'm told, pulled over, disrupted it, had shouting hateful speech. And my understanding, again, I haven't spoken to anybody to clarify this, but maybe even an assault-type situation that occurred. Again, as I'm saying then, and I'm going to say it very loud and very clear, we and this city do not condone it, and we support the public's constitutional right to assemble, gather, and lawfully engage in peaceful protest activity. And that is their right. And no one, no one, whether you agree or disagree, has any right to do otherwise and to be hateful, disrespectful, and prevent their lawful right to assemble. So with that, I would like to go to item four, Public Comments. For items not on the agenda, City Clerk.
I have speaker cards from Maria Concha, followed by Alenny Kaye, followed by Jamal Katut. If you would please approach the podium.
Yeah, there we are. Okay. Thank you. Number one, I should read my emails more closely because I went down to the rack thinking that we were going to have the meeting down there this time. And I will tell you now, the line to get in to check in was all the way to the middle of the lobby, people wanting to go in and use that facility. As I said to some people there, I was there on Saturday night and like to thank our city manager and the council itself to a wonderful event that was hosted there. And we have baseball diamonds all over that park, but the real jewel is the rack. And I am so proud, as a lifelong resident of San Bruno, I'm so proud of that, of seeing that there, to have it come to fruition in my lifetime. But, Mr. Mayor, what you just said, that makes me sick. People do not have the right to go and try and enforce their opinions on other people when they're peacefully, I can't say protesting, but making their opinions and their beliefs known. It's not right, it's not fair. And what kind of example does that show our children in our county, in our city? What does that show them that it's okay to do things like that? That's wrong. That's completely wrong. I hope, I just hope, that whoever it is that's doing that kind of protest, or whatever they think is their bluster, they think it's making a difference, oh yeah, it's going to make a difference, and I hope they're prosecuted to the full extent of the law. But thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Hi, Council. Thank you, Mayor Rico Medina, for your comments. I had prepared a comment, not knowing that you were going to speak on the matter, so bear with me. I just wanted to highlight that the man was rather ironically named William Smallman, and he decided to park his car in front of San Bruno Library and drunkenly stumble past a group of men indirectly to a group of women and children, including myself, who, as you mentioned, were peacefully expressing our First Amendment right. With all the grace of a wrecking ball, he continued to bump into me as he was invading my space and trying to intimidate us. And in front of children, he was hurling racist and Islamophobic slurs, calling us all terrorists and accusing us of beheading babies. I don't know if you guys have been paying attention to what's been going on, but there are beheaded and dismembered and Palestinian babies who are just blown to pieces every day, and we wake up every morning to images of this on our phones, and that's why we are out in front of City Hall every Thursday, and we will continue to be there until Palestine is free. And it's our duty to do so. And this whole, ever since this happened, I just, I couldn't help but think about how quickly the city and San Bruno PD was to act when a city employee was apparently, or was allegedly harassed and accosted out in front of the senior center on a night when a dozen officers were already on site. And you guys acted by throwing up these unnecessary barricades at the council meetings, sending the message to the community that we're violent and hostile people and that you need to be protected from us. And let's not forget Mayor Rico Medina and the city manager's distasteful and racist post on the city website blaming our community for these allegations, knowing full well that the culprit was not us. And just this glaring double standard, it's unacceptable and honestly infuriating, and it makes me wonder, like, why even have this sign, "San Bruno Stands United Against Hate", if you're not going to do something tangible to stand up against hate and protect your You know, you've already disgraced the city's reputation by not even allowing a conversation about a ceasefire resolution to occur and not allowing the community, our fasting and Muslim community, to break fast in the senior center lobby during the holy month of Ramadan. And when history is written, your actions aren't going to age well so far, so I strongly urge you all to consider the inequities and how these incidences have been handled and to take meaningful action to protect all members of our community, all members of San Bruno. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. I want to correct, there was four hate crimes out in front of City Hall, not two. Okay, so on May 2nd, I was setting up for a peaceful rally in front of City Hall. I was physically assaulted, had my personal property damaged, had multiple hate crimes committed against me. I was also pushed into oncoming traffic, okay, where I could have, could have been killed. This man called me a fucking Arab, a fucking terrorist, told me to get out of his fucking country, excuse my language, okay? What else? The police came and, hold on, I'm lost here. SBPD didn't arrest the man despite numerous witnesses and me telling PD that I wanted to press charges. They called it mutual combat because I was actually able to get the best of him while defending myself. This all happened because I'm Palestinian. The case, the case is still sitting on the Samatay County DA's desk, waiting for judgment. And then on June 15th, a Muslim man, not related to our rallies, was praying in the town center, I believe, where he was, where he was assaulted and threatened with a knife. That guy was arrested, though. Thank God. And then on August 8th, the same drunken fool that got arrested last week pulled up in front of, on El Camino, and he parked his car in the slow lane for almost 20 minutes. We called the police department about two minutes into it, the police never showed up. They showed up about two minutes after the guy left. He was hurling racial slurs at us, calling us all kinds of names. When the cops came, they, we gave him the guy's license plate number, and I don't know what happened after that. And then again, on August 22nd, the same drunken fool returned. This time, he got out of his truck, he threatened, threatened us, assaulted us, committed multiple hate crimes against us, against myself, my daughter, and numerous others. This time, he was arrested for, I believe, a DUI, assault, terroristic threats ironically, and numerous hate crimes. When San Bruno, when is San Bruno going to stand up and actually do something about these hate crimes? Rico, these incidents happened because you, because of you. Our mayor showed your own Islamophobia here in March during Ramadan, and also in your hate-filled, inaccurate justification about it in a statement on the city's website. You have a history of not taking accountability and blaming others.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Next speakers are Stephanie and Wassam D.
Good evening. I'm here today because I want to express my concern and disappointment in the fact that the city of San Bruno has done so little to support a community that's severely hurting at this point in time. Being from the Bay Area, you know, specifically the peninsula, I feel like we're always on the cutting edge, or, you know, one of the first cities to make resolutions and statements on behalf of other oppressed groups. I've seen the city of San Bruno do so, you know, to reject hate crimes in light of what happened to George Floyd, as they should. I've seen them do so for AAPI hate crimes, as they should. But it's very curious to me that there have been a multitude of crimes that have happened to your community in front of your city hall with children and elderly folks present, crimes that are literally what could be considered assault, attempted manslaughter or attempted murder. And we get a simple little statement just now. You know, I'm honestly really flustered right now, so I'm probably not articulating myself in the best way possible, but I would really encourage every person in this room to do some reflecting and see if you are othering Arabs, if you don't know what that is, and Muslims, and seeing us as different from other members of this community and not as worthy of protecting as other members of this community. We are just like everybody else. What you are hearing in the news about our backgrounds and our religions is propaganda. You rub shoulders with us at restaurants, you come to our establishments, and we deserve the same protection and, you know, humanization that anybody else does. So, you know, obviously you made this statement today, but I think that more needs to be done to protect this community, especially given the fact that all we're doing is advocating for the protection of lives on all sides, on every side. We don't want to see children slaughtered. What is wrong with that? So I just, I hope that you guys will reflect and really, you know, work on this obvious dehumanization that you have of Arabs and Muslims, and hopefully, you know, come out from this whole situation, you know, having grown and finally acknowledging our humanity in the same way that you would want yours acknowledged. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
Good evening. So as you have heard, every Thursday for the past six months, the Palestinian community has been peacefully protesting the ongoing genocide of Palestinians and the unwavering support of U.S. arms funding the genocide in front of San Bruno City Hall. Within that timeframe, the community has experienced three assaults, from what I know, while they were, while we were protesting peacefully. One was almost catastrophic, ending somebody's life. Let it be known that to the public that the city has not shown any level of action or statements condemning the assaults of its constituents participating the First Amendment. This is no surprise, as it reflects the city's inactions for civil and human rights advocacy, in particular, when it comes to their own constituents. We have not forgotten when the mayor made a public statement in the Daily Journal and on the city website insinuating that the Palestinian community is inherently violent. The mayor and the city manager have shown levels of deliberate discrimination and passive inactions toward members of the community on several occasions. It has taken the city six months to publish an apology statement for the mayor's Islamophobic actions that he has labeled as tone deaf. Although the mayor and the city manager were able to publish this, the statement recently, there was no apology in the statement. Let it be known to the city and to every community member and to every member in this nation that there will be no civil rest and no civil justice or liberty of any people when human rights and the advocacy for human rights is not a priority. You can build as many recreations, you can build as many buildings as you want, beautify San Bruno, quote unquote, but that will not make you memorable when your moral actions or inactions don't take place for humanity and human justice. This is how you will be remembered. This is your legacy. The city council should have pushed the mayor and the city manager to rush this apology. But you didn't, and it's taken you six months to do so. It's a shame. It's a shame on this council, shame on this city manager, and I hope that we will see change after this next election.
Thank you for your comments. Next speaker, please.
I have no other speaker cards.
Okay. Thank you. We'll move on to item number five, Announcements and Presentations. First item is Recreation and Aquatic Center Update and Shift to Full Operations. Damian will be giving that presentation this evening.
Good evening, Honorable Mayor and Council Members. My name is Damian Sandholm, the Deputy Director for the Community Services Department. I'm here tonight to provide an update on San Bruno's new Recreation and Aquatic Center. This slide illustrates our agenda for the presentation tonight. Tonight, I will provide an update on the Recreation and Aquatic Center soft opening period and our shift to full operations for the facility. The Rack opened for our soft opening phase on July 24th with abbreviated hours of operation. Through August 23rd, the Rack sold 320 annual memberships, 257 monthly memberships, and 559 punch passes. We also had approximately 3,100 drop-in visits. The membership and daily drop-in totaled $181,000. I will note that the revenue received during the soft opening period does not reflect the one-year commitment billed monthly by those that selected the billed monthly option. The revenue projections for memberships and drop-in visits for the current fiscal year is $1,274,000. Thirty-two room rental requests have been received, are being processed, and scheduled by staff, with the first non-city rental scheduled for September 8th. Additionally, staff has given over 6,000 tours to help introduce the state-of-the-art facility to the community. On August 24th, the Community Services Department hosted over 1,200 people at the Rack's grand opening celebration. This event included live music, an activity zone with carnival games and large inflatables, face painting, photo booths, boat races in our outdoor pool, and picnic-style games. The first 1,000 guests received a ticket for an item from our food trucks that were at the event. The first 500 guests also received a commemorative reusable water bottle. The dedication ceremony and ribbon-cutting began at 1:00 PM with the flag-raising ceremony led by local scout troops. After the ribbon-cutting, the Rack opened for everyone to tour the facility. This slide shows our general operation hours for the Rack. The gym and pool schedule will change based on our programming, and we encourage everyone to visit the Rack website for an updated schedule, or the current schedule. We are currently expanding our programs at the Rack. Fitness classes began yesterday, August 26th, with Tai Chi and Zumba classes. Swim lessons are scheduled to begin on September 14th. The first sessions of swim lessons are full, but we will be expanding our lesson offering to be a robust swim lesson program for all ages and abilities. The gym schedule will soon include dedicated time for pickleball, volleyball, and basketball, and we are working towards a Child Watch program to allow time for adults to utilize the fitness room and lap swim times while their children play in our children's play area located in Classroom 3. This list shows some of the items we will be working on in the fall, including an assessment of the membership models, plans to address landscaping on Crystal Springs Road, an assessment of the outdoor pool fence, marketing for memberships, rentals, and programs, and developing programs like Child Watch to promote access to the facility. This concludes my presentation. Thank you from the Rack team. I'm available for questions.
Thank you. Any questions at this time? Questions?
Questions. I have comments.
Questions?
I have comments.
Let's go back to comments. Comments are okay? Yeah.
So I don't have any questions, but I have, I have comments. I have been, obviously, I was down at the, down at the Rack all day on Saturday, as many in our community were, and it's, it was just a magical, magical day. And I've received many, many messages, both in person and by other means, since then, about just what a wonderful day this was for our community, and I just want to applaud our entire city organization for getting, getting this project to this point, obviously, and all the, all of the hard work and, and sacrifice, but then just the execution of the event on, on Saturday was just, just amazing. I just wanted to, to share that here. I've shared it, I've shared it over and over again, it sounded like a broken record, but it's, it was just really a wonderful day and something that this community really, really needed, and thank you.
Yes, I want to say pretty much the same thing. It was truly an amazing day. Just everything was perfect. Maybe a little too warm for everybody in San Bruno, okay? If we're going to do it, something else, but in all seriousness, it was, it was beautiful. And I could, I could say it was one of my best days in San Bruno, of looking around, seeing everything going on, and thinking, that's ours. We deserve this. We deserve nice things. We can have nice things. I do want to share what the questions that I've been hearing the most. The latest one right now is, when is the outdoor pool going to open? When does water aerobic start? The pool fence, of course, and I saw staff working on that on that Saturday. There was a bunch, bunch of people tape measures and stuff around the perimeter. And, and the last thing is the family memberships. Understandably, to get the Rack open in that amount of time and have the programming and trying to figure it all out, but the next step for the families of San Bruno is, how does my child get to be a member so that they don't pay more than it costs me to go? And I, and I have that same situation. But I look forward to maybe we can get a couple of those answers and I, and about what, what, when is the outdoor pool going to open? I think that's kind of the big thing right now. I've heard a couple of different things, but I haven't heard from staff, and I think this would be a great opportunity to kind of share a projected timeframe when, when that would occur.
We don't have a definitive schedule for when it's going to open, but we do expect it to be in the next few weeks if everything goes well.
Is there something that you could share why, what's, what's the, what's the holdup?
We're just working through the county permitting process, and then we'll be ready to go.
All right, all right. Okay. Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So I also wanted to add my appreciation and congratulations to staff for an excellent event on Saturday, but also for expressing my appreciation for all of the work that went into getting to that point. I know that it was, it was a sprint at the end, and there was a lot of things that had to fall into place, and the team came together and made it all happen, and, and it was impressive, and it looked seamless to, to the public, and I think it was very much appreciated by the entire community, so I wanted to add my thanks. Damian, I just want to ask one question on the slide. The Sunday hours, you said those are going to change because it's different on the website right now. Right now, I think it's noon to 5:00. The slide said 8:00 to noon, so I just wanted to verify what the...
Then I do apologize. The slide was incorrect. Our Sunday hours are 12:00 to 5:00.
Okay. Thank you.
Councilmember Alvarez. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I echo everyone up here. I think the staff did a really good job preparing for the event, and all the hard work that you guys put into the, preparing the event, I really appreciate it, and I think it was a successful event. I think San Bruno, in general, the residents, as I observed during the event, were all happy about the program. Thank you.
I think it's all been said, and I do know, and I, I came up to the Juniper Sarah with a barbecue for some of the, a couple of officers are going to retire, and I came back down and I stopped by the Rack again. And I was thinking back to when this building opened, and I was on city staff, and again, it didn't have all the technologies back in '87, think about that, or it didn't have all of the amenities. And so it was kind enough that the staff that was still on duty at 4:30 when it closed that Saturday was able to gather in the lobby and personally thank them for that it was a heavy lift and a lot to do, a lot still to do. But being able to have that pulled off and their energy and their passion, I think, and I told them, that they did the department proud and they did this city proud. So I did have that opportunity to thank them, and they were smiling from start to finish. I think they felt the energy, and they felt the reward of what the community felt, and everybody was amazed. So thank you to the team, and I know it's not just a department, it was a unified team, all hands on deck, no pun intended, that it took for everybody to get through the finish line. So thank you. With that, let's move on to item B, Meet TED.
Good evening, Mayor and Council Members. My name is Matt Lee. I'm the Public Works Director. Unfortunately, we have some technical difficulties tonight, but we had a video that we were going to share with you. But before we get started, I wanted to kind of say that August was a big month for us. You know, we had something that the community's been desiring for a very long time, and it took a little time to come, and I would categorize it as a once-in-a-generation investment. And no, I'm not talking about the Rack, I'm talking about the paving patch truck, TED. TED is a Measure G-funded patch truck that was funded solely by Measure G to help us with the concerns that the residents have, that's listed number two on our survey, which is paving. And so TED, TED is an operational unit that will allow us to be able to perform pothole repairs in a more efficient manner with hopefully less staff and to be able to use all the asphalt that we get from a plant. The patch truck ceremony was served on August, the patch truck ceremony did occur on August 13th, so we thank everyone who came to see the inaugural first patching of a pothole. And if, we can show some photos of the, of the patch truck itself, just so people know who TED is. Why do we call this patch truck TED? TED was a streets and storm supervisor for, who worked in public works for over two decades. It was his vision that came up with utilizing a patch truck for our town to increase the amount of pothole repairs that we could do. But TED also is an acrostic that stands for tackling every pothole, ensuring smooth travels, and delivering quality repairs. And so with that, we felt that it was very timely and namely to name the truck TED. TED, if you guys will start to see, will start to make its way around town as we get more comfortable with the operational use of the equipment. It was at Euclid last week. Here is a photo of TED and the Public Works employees at the patch, patch truck ceremony. Next photo, please. This is the acrostic for TED, and if you can show the next photo after that. What I really came to council for to make the announcement on is that we're trying to do a, we're trying to involve the community with TED. So if you see TED around town, if you can snap a picture of TED and tag the city, @CityOfSanBruno, with... City of San Bruno with the hashtags that are showing up on some of the screens over there, I, you can, we'll, we'll reach out to you and get you a Public Works sticker. So please do that before December 1st or December 2024. And we hope to see the community as excited about TED as they are about the RAC. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Lee. Any questions? Any comments? Marty Medina.
Yes. Thank you. TED looks super, super cool. I wanted to acknowledge and thank you all for, all your staff for putting together the, the event, the demonstration. It was, it was, it was really efficient. My question is, how do we let the public know when we have a street that's in pretty bad shape? And Euclid is one of them. But there's a number of other ones of how much of the repair that can actually be done with TED? And how do we let the community of that, the, the residents on that street know that, you know, there's only so much that TED could do until it actually gets paved? And it's going to be in that condition like walnut and, and pine and Euclid and there's a couple of others. Just, how do we get, how can we let our residents know, like, we're doing the best we can with that, but TED is not the solution to it?
Through the mayor. TED is definitely not the solution for all our paving problems, but he is a tool that, that can help us in our battle against better streets. And again, we love paving. And so with that, we've created a website that actually highlights what is a pothole and what can be repaired as a pothole repair and what may be considered pavement repair that may need a, a larger repair method, right? Such as paving or slurry sealing or crack sealing. So that's available on the We Love Paving website that we've set up a couple of months back. It runs through, if you go to the website, there is somebody called Slurry the Seal and he'll give you a thumbs up or thumbs down on if, if this is a pothole that can be repaired as a pothole and if it cannot be repaired as a pothole repair and needs a, a different method of repair. We often get those questions that you have. We've now started to direct them to the website to hopefully be a, a, a venue for, for people to get information more about paving. Again, paving may seem simple, but it's not as simple as everybody thinks. And we really are trying to improve San Bruno one street at a time. So it's just going to take a little bit of time for us to get there and we definitely need funding to do that.
And if I can just follow up and if there was a way you could share where TED is going to be so people can be on the lookout for, to take the picture? And also, like on San Bruno Avenue, I was having to drive down that today and it's kind of like there was a string of, of puddles. And so is the idea that the TED would come to a certain street and kind of knock them all out? Or what's, what's kind of the plan going forward with, with TED? How?
The, the desire is that the community spots TED and that they post it on social media and people can try to find where TED is. What TED does is he actually responds to ticket requests.
Okay.
So when there's a ticket request for a pothole, based on kind of the amount of requests that we have, TED goes and addresses them one at a time. Now, what TED does is he doesn't go to that particular pothole and just leave if there's five more in the way. If it's there within the reasonable amount of time and they can accomplish it and move on to the next ticket, that's what TED would do.
Anything, Councilmember Alvarez. I was, Director Lee, it sounds like you and TED have a real good relationship.
TED loves paving, just like we do, so.
Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you for the presentation with just a picture, but we, I, I think we dig TED. As you mentioned about the funding, did we set a limit for TED to repair every fiscal year? Or do we have a continuous funding somewhere from the measure so that the, the ticket keeps, to keep coming and continue repairing?
Good question. Again, TED is, is a tool in our battle against pavement disrepair. And so we do have operational funds for pothole repair, repairs ready in our operating budget. And so what TED does is it hopefully can enhance the efficiency with the operating budget that we currently have. We, TED is obviously new and as we're going through the operational, operational get to know period of, of TED, we're trying to figure out how efficient we can be. And so if, if it turns out we're able to do more potholes than, than our operating budget allows, we may come back at a, at a different time during the budget season to request that. But right now, we believe that we have sufficient funding to have TED work on potholes all year long.
That sounds great. Thank you.
Vice Mayor. Would it be, I know that we, during the event, the little ceremony there in the parking lot, there was some video of, of the operation, seeing the, the truck patch that, that hole that was, that was made in the, in the parking lot. And I thought it was pretty amazing that they actually created the pothole and filled it probably all within, within 30 minutes easily. So it is, it is pretty amazing what they can accomplish with, with the truck. So I was wondering if the, a video or portion of that video could be put on the website so that people could actually see the thing in action and maybe help to recognize it if they do see it on the street. I've seen it driving around already a few times and it's like, hey, it's TED. So I think that, that might be kind of helpful and then maybe also a description of how, how efficient it is. Because in, in talking to the crew, they said previously it was multiple trucks, multiple people. Now it's one truck, two guys, and they can do the job of all of the, all that previously. So I, I think it is important to, to really tell the story because this is a very good investment of our Measure G dollars and I think it's something to be proud of. Thank you.
Sorry, I'm just trying to call the questions. So thank you, thank you, thank you about TED. But we, our, our goal was to share the video that we were going to post online. There's just some technical difficulties, but there will be a video that'll eventually go online that, 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 that shows the ceremony and the potholing. I will correct Councilmember Salazar, it took less than 30 minutes, probably about like 10, 10 minutes, which included TED coming in, everyone moving out of the way and then, then coming out and unloading everything. And that was us creating the pothole so we could do it. And so hopefully the goal is that, you know, as we get, TED gets to know the crew and the crew gets to know TED, they work in unison and that we could be a little more efficient with it. And so that's what we're hoping to do over the next couple of months. And so again, I encourage everybody that sees TED to please take his picture and tag us on Instagram at City of San Bruno and use the hashtags that are shared. And hopefully you can come by and pick up a I Dig Public Works sticker. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much for the presentation. We'll move on to item C. This is something that I had talked to the manager. I, I know we're going from TED to RO and maybe we should have done it the other way around. But I, you know, we obviously get the questions, we all do, and regardless of districts. And I think it's one of those things of like, people understand, they're patient, but they're just not knowing when the timeline is. And so I wanted to take this opportunity through you, Director Lee, to maybe update the council slash community.
Sure, no problem. Again, Matt Lee, Public Works Director. As we wait for the PowerPoint slide to load for the RO streetlight project, what I'm here before you tonight is to do a quick update on the regulated output streetlight replacement project. Giving it just a quick second or two to load. So while we wait for the, the PowerPoint presentation to load, I don't want to take up too much of, of your time, but I'll, I'll start into the background of the presentation itself. Just a reminder, the regulated outlet project is to determine the most efficient system for us to replace our remaining RO streetlights. What we experienced in the past eight years were five distinct outages that lasted for periods longer than a month or two that required significant repair. This project was generated out of an outage in 2021 in which repairs took more than a couple of months to, to enact. And a project came, a project was developed in the CIP for us to, to do so. Since then, as we've been working on the project itself, we experienced two more outages in specific neighborhoods. One in October of 23 and the second one in October of 24. There are current neighborhoods that are still outlet streetlights. We've made more, about seven to eight distinct repairs and those attempts have failed to the point where the system probably needs significant rewiring. And the estimates are generally there. One of the neighborhoods experienced a rewiring about a decade ago and that repair has since failed. So because of that, while we were working on a project, we had to pivot. In November of 23, I came before council and we conducted a study session to receive update and provide feedback on regulated, on the regulated output streetlight replacement project. At that time, we kind of talked through the solar lights that we've been testing for the past year to year and a half as we go through all seasons to ensure that the, there is viability in this new technology. At that time, we recommended a specific, specific solar streetlight and recommended that we move to a solar light option wherever feasible as part of the solar light project. At that time in November, I think the, one of the streetlights, one of the ROs, one of the neighborhoods had RO light outage and there was a desire for us to implement this repair as quickly as we could. And so that, we fast forward that to last July 23rd, I think approximately about a month ago, we came to council and we discussed the fact that we were able to identify funding sources that would be able to help us with the specific neighborhoods that have been blacked out for, for more than a few months now. That we labeled as phase one. Phase one, as we discussed in July, is the replacement of not, sorry, there's a misnumber there, not 150 streetlights, but the streetlights in the two neighborhoods. And the timeline for that was that we get all of that installed by the summer of 2025 and the total budget we currently have is 816,000. There, there was a question then at that time in terms of the lifecycle costs of what that would be and if solar lights were actually had a, if the lifecycle costs justified being able to do the work. And so what we did is we, we shared an analysis with council on a weekly digest and we're sharing it now with the public. If you look at the lifecycle costs, there are, there were two scenarios for us to go through. Either go to a parallel circuit streetlight system, which is a non-RO system, which has parallel wires, which will allow us to be able to have a, I guess you would call a traditional system in which if one light blacks out, the entire neighborhood doesn't go out. And so in order for us to do that, with the construction costs alone and the ongoing maintenance costs and electricity costs, the 20-year lifecycle cost of these streetlights would be approximately about $6.8 million. Now that coupled with the solar powered streetlights that we're doing in the two neighborhoods, with the solar powered streetlights and the maintenance, ongoing maintenance costs, it would come out to about 1.4 million for a 20-year lifecycle. I just want to highlight that there is, I would call smart capabilities in the streetlight system, which has an additional cost of approximately 300,000 every five years. We did not factor that into our implementation just because we purely don't have the money for it. But we believe that for phase one, we were able to bring lights to the neighborhoods that currently are, are operating without streetlights at night and that it would kind of help, it would help us satisfy the intent, a portion of the intent of the project itself and the desire for council for us to implement the repairs as quickly as we can. Now the question becomes, why, why can't we just go do it right now? Unfortunately, these are not lights that you can buy on Amazon that comes with two-day delivery. There is a long lead item for these lights and if anyone that works on traffic signals and stuff, we know that the poles themselves also have a long lead time. So after the authorization from council in July of 23rd, 2024, we immediately enacted procuring the streetlights, solar streetlights and the poles as quickly as we could. With the lead time of both those items, the poles are anticipated to come in the late fall, early winter to be delivered to our, to our facilities because we, the city, are going to be furnishing this equipment for a contractor to be doing the install. We felt that that would be the quickest way for us to be able to implement the repair. The streetlights themselves, due to the lead item would, first batch would come in winter of 2024. Now, the challenge that we have is we weren't able to procure a specific amount of lights, all the batches at once. So we've broken down into three batches. So the first one hopefully will be arriving in the early winter, late fall, and then we'll have batches of 50 come at various times, probably about two to three weeks apart. And then with that, we're going to have the contractor install them as quickly as they can when they come. Now, in terms of the, when are we procuring the contractor, we're lining this up with an informal bid process in which we are going to be advertising at, at the middle of this month. And we hope to receive bids so that we can begin construction in the fall of 2024, just in time for when the materials come online. And so like I mentioned earlier, the installation is going to be ongoing as the deliveries are received. So our hope is as we receive them, we put them up as quickly as we can because we know that the residents in both those neighborhoods have expressed a variety of concerns and frustrations for the lack of lighting in their neighborhood. With that, I'm open to any questions that you guys may have.
Thank you very much, Director Lee. Councilmember Alvarez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Lee, for the presentation. One question on the enhancement. You mentioned that the lifespan of the, the streetlight, the solar is 20 years. With the enhancement that we would pay 300,000 every five years, would that prolong the, the life more than 20 years? Because we're, in every five years, we are enhancing it. And what type of enhancement is, is the, the 300,000 entails?
So the Gridshift Connect is a software connectivity program that allows us to be able to analyze and, and see data coming from the streetlights. It's, it requires a fee because that's just part of the business model for all solar streetlights and smart devices. What it allows us to do is I, I do not believe that it's going to enhance the service life of the streetlights, but what it will do, it will provide what we would categorize as better service to the community. Because typically with a traditional streetlight, we only know to replace the streetlight when someone notices that the light is out. So that's either we do our daily checks, which we try to do, but we can't catch all, all streetlights because there's, there's a lot in town, or we get a complaint from a resident. That Gridshift Connect will allow us to know when that streetlight is out right away and hopefully be able to replace it before anyone can even tell us that the light is out, right? Or anyone notices it enough so they can tell us. I'm sure someone will notice that the light is out. And so it, it has that function, but it also allows us to remotely dim lights and there's a lot of other capabilities that we can do remotely. And it allows us to read on the data of the lights. It allows us to be able to track if that particular solar light is getting an off sun. And it just moves us into this era of more smart devices, right? As we try to venture to be a smart city. And it can give us the capability and helpfully provide better service for the community.
Can I have a follow-up? I have a follow-up on that. For the amount that we, for the enhancement, would, would that be part of like a contract of some sort? Or is that a city employee doing the work to replace? So, so we will be notified if the light is, is off or broken? Then who does the maintenance? Is it the city or is it part of this upgrade that is included in this fee?
Through the mayor. So the, the, any operational repair and maintenance will be done by city staff because we are maintaining the streetlight. What the... What the Gridshift Connect, which is a software program that kind of shares data with us and notifies us, does is it just gives us a more timely information so we can act on it. Because with traditional streetlights, we don't know when they're out unless someone visually inspects it.
Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you for the presentation. For the, looking at the ongoing maintenance costs for the solar lights, does that, does the, the approximate 180,000 in maintenance every five years, does that include battery replacements as, as needed? Because I know that, you know, in speaking with some of the vendors and, and all of that, I know that, you know, and, and we know from all rechargeable devices that the batteries don't last forever. And I would imagine these batteries aren't expected to last 20 years.
As part of our analysis, it, it factors in the battery replacement based on our conversations with the vendor.
Great, great, thank you. And then I, I know the answer, I'm asking it anyway because it wasn't in the presentation and I, I know we don't have a representative from PD here, but while these lights are out, we, we are still conducting increased patrols in areas where the lights are out, you know, for the duration of this, of this problem, to your knowledge.
Yes. Unfortunately, as part of standard protocol, when this does happen, we, we do have the police officers, they are notified and they do additional passing checks.
Okay. I just wanted, I agree, I knew that, but it wasn't in the, it wasn't in the presentation. I just wanted to reiterate that for the, for the public who are affected in these neighborhoods. Thank you.
And, and just in case we do need, the police chief is not physically present, but is on Zoom, so we have him, we need information. Councilmember Medina.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Director Lee. It's one of the hot topics that we, that we, I'm sure all of the council hears. It is frustrating and thank you for making it really, really simple to explain. It's not like ordering these off of Amazon. They don't show up. There's a long lead time, so I want to thank you for providing that additional information. My, my, my request is how do we improve the communication to the affected residents? Because if they're not watching tonight, somebody's going to post on social media like, hey, the lights are still out. And then there'll be eight or five, eight, eight or more people commenting on it and they, they, they're clueless about what this effort really takes. So it is my understanding through the city manager's office that there, they are maintaining a email list that they can communicate with the residents who are interested so that they can receive updates. And so my, my request is to encourage that. And if there's any other ideas, if, if, if a set of letters can be sent out in a couple of months from now to kind of let, letting those residents know like, hey, this is the latest update. Because my, I'm guessing that not too many people are going to watch tonight.
Good question. So about, about a month or two ago, we did send a letter to every resident in the affected area, explained them of the situation and gave, we gave them general timelines and I believe in that letter as well. And so I agree, there's, we could probably over communicate this to residents and there may be residents that just may not be aware. And so anytime a resident contacts us about it, we do really have a discussion with them on the effort. And so we could also, it's good to know that the city manager's office has an email address where they're collecting emails, where they can share information. We can also push information out there as, as that changes. But I'm not sure if the project has changed much since last July, about a month ago when we came out with the information. I suspect that by the time fall comes, when it does get darker sooner, the complaints will probably go up. And I will tell you that our streets and store manager fields these calls every day and he has conversations with people. We, we are hopeful that people will begin to see the installation of lights. And I think when people see the installation of lights, that they'll know that it's finally coming. I think the hard part for people is just counterintuitive to think that it takes these long, takes, takes this long to get streetlights and poles. And so we, I'm here just to say that we're working as quickly as we can. Some residents will understand that, some may not. They, they have concerns which are legitimate and we're really trying to, we're really trying to help them understand that we're working as quickly as we can to install these lights.
And just one last, make sure I have this right. We have the budget for this work. All we're waiting for is the, for the material to be delivered so they can be installed. And the reason I'm saying that is because there's a number of different residents that are saying, well, you could, you could spend money on Centennial Plaza, but you can't fix the lights. And it's like, it's separate budgets. It's, 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 we can do more than one thing at a time. And given additional revenue, we do more and more and more. Thank you.
Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Director Lee, you may have mentioned this, maybe I missed it, but when we were talking about the budget, the 816,000 was for the lights, but then we, on the delivery schedule, we also mentioned poles and I was wondering if the poles are included in that price?
Yes. So the lights and poles are part of the materials that fall under the 816,000. The one varying factor at the moment is the informal bid that we're waiting on. We will understand that in the next month, but based on our engineer's estimate, we believe that 816,000 is enough for us to be able to move forward with phase one and get, get the lights installed in those neighborhoods that are currently needing it.
Okay. And the number of lights that are listed in the outage is a little less than the 150 that we're saying or being purchased. So are we going to put up, we're putting up more lights than we had before?
As I mentioned earlier, that 150 number is, was incorrect, so I apologize for the confusion. Our goal is to replace the amount of lights that are currently out. So that's not to say that in certain neighborhoods, there have been lights that have been, that have been out that we've been able to repair. So certain, certain RO neighborhoods, we've been able to get half the lights up and running. So our goal is to replace those two because we know at some point, those wires are going to fail because they've have and we've replaced it about a decade ago and it's, it's showing signs of failure. So we will be replacing those two. The counts are a little, it's hard to see the counts, they're a little off because we actually also have a couple of solar streetlights that we've been testing. So that's about 10 to 20 of them that are kind of floating around in different neighborhoods. You know, as, as this, as these lights have blacked out in these neighborhoods, we really tried to spread those lights out for the moment to get people as much lights as we can. Now, if you talk to any resident, they want the light in front of their house, obviously, but we just don't have enough lights to be able to put everywhere. And so we really tried to spread them out so that we can get some lights to the, to the parts of the neighborhood. And so that's why the counts don't really add up. I mean, it's just really highlights how much we've been trying to do and not too traditional, just wait for the lights to come and, and put them in. We've really been, if you, if you have an in-depth conversation with our streets and store manager, there's been lots of thought and conversation for how we can get the community in those neighborhoods, the lights that we can with the current resources that we have.
And are we going to replace every pole that has a, a current light that's not working? Are we replacing every pole or are we going to utilize some of the existing poles with the new light, the new mastheads?
Yeah, so fortunately or unfortunately, there have been outages in those particular neighborhoods over the years. And so during those periods, you know, as one of our performance measures in the operating budget, we replace poles. So when we had funding and we could replace poles because that's a, that's another issue with those lights, those poles are old, they're made of a material that's probably not suitable for the area, we've been replacing those. So over time, we've replaced a significant amount of poles in those areas already. So if those poles are newer poles, like aluminum poles that we've replaced in the past couple of years, we're going to utilize those poles for the new solar lights that come in. And that's the, one of the reasons why we discussed in November of 23, why we selected a specific solar light because they fit on the particular poles that we currently have, right? And so the, the goal is to have things be able to, be, to utilize what we can that's still viable out in the area.
And is there any opportunity to optimize the location of the lights or would that only delay the project? Meaning that if there's a pole that may not be in the best possible position based on perhaps tree growth or, you know, development in the area, are we going to actually look at whether or not there's still, it's still the best location? And I'm kind of thinking that might only delay.
That, that is a very good question. That is the crux of most of our discussions the past couple of months when we were looking to further quickly deliver these lights. We do have openings for assistant and senior level engineers, so if you'd like to apply, I think that we could use your know-how and questioning. Yes, if, if we look at it and we do the design, it would, it would slow down because we have to figure out where they're going, right? And so one of, and that would also increase costs because of the fact that you have to move the foundation. And so what we are doing now, based on how we're testing it, we're putting lights hopefully back in the places where the foundations currently are. Because this is in, I wouldn't call it an enhancement, but an accelerated delivery timeline, we know that there may be lights that might not get enough sun. So we might have to move those over time and that's not factored into the project yet, right? And so the decision then becomes, well, why didn't we think about this? We, if we recall, the, the council's desire is to get lights as quickly as possible. And so for us, the, the question then becomes, is it better to get every single light perfect or get light out to the community? And so the decision that we made was to make sure we can get the lights out to the community, right? And so that's why the cost is, the cost that it is because we're not theoretically replacing any of the foundations. Because we're using the same poles, we're using the, the lights that can mount on the existing poles that we have. There will be poles that we have to replace. And so that's, that's how we're getting this as quickly as we can. And so we've heard loud and clear from the community and council that we need to get these lights out there. And you can always design something to be perfect, but we've heard that we need lights out in those neighborhoods and that's what we're trying to do.
Okay. We can't let the perfect be the enemy of the good, whatever that saying is. Okay, I get it. So thank you.
Okay, well, thank you very much for the report and the update. And, and again, if we can keep the community updated, and I mean, you had a presentation here tonight, so maybe just the PowerPoint, I don't need all the discussion, but just something that can be shown and sent, maybe posted on social media, just, just to update. And I think it's just one of those things like the, the potholes in the streets. People just kind of want to know, can you tell me when? And it may not be the perfect answer or the answer that they want to hear, but I think it just sets real expectations and, and what we're doing and that we're, we're on top of it to the best of our ability. But thank you very much. And I know the team's working hard. Is there any members of the public who want to speak on anything on presentations?
I have no speaker cards.
Let's move on to consent calendar. All items are considered routine and implemented in earlier council action, may be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion unless requested. There will be one single public comment period for all items in this section unless a council member requests to pull an item for a separate vote. Anybody for a separate vote? Anybody for a comment or staff question?
Through, through the mayor. I have a brief comment on item 6G and I would be okay with only reading the first bullet of the seven that are there.
Yeah, that's good. Anybody else?
He has it.
Okay. Then there's no, nothing else. Okay. All right, let's go to G and I'll go to council member Hamilton and this is considered adoption resolution approving the design of the avenues 2-1 and 2-2 sewer and water main replacement project.
Thank you. I just wanted to highlight this for the, for the public. I mean, this is a $15 million project to replace sewer and water mains in the avenues. This is a, this is a massive project and something I think a little too big to just kind of pass by on, on, on consent without, you know, just highlighting it. You know, obviously there's, there's a lot of talk about the, the bond measure that's gone on to the, that's, that's going on the ballot. And, you know, what, what this council unanimously is trying to do is try to, to, you know, address the, the funding shortfalls that we have for, for, you know, the, the unfunded capital improvement needs. The total capital improvement needs is over a billion dollars at this point, but over half or about half of that is, is funded. And this is some of, this is some of that work that is funded. So when, when, when folks ask, you know, why are the, you know, why is my water bill so high? Why is my sewer bill so high? The, it's, it's funding these types of projects which are absolutely necessary. And if you look at the, at the map that's within the, that's within the, the staff report, this is a massive amount of, of work that'll be done throughout the avenues where, you know, and I would imagine some of the oldest infrastructure that we have in the city based on where it is. So again, I just wanted to, to highlight this important project, thank, thank our, our water and sewer enterprise team for, for bringing this work forward and for, for getting started on this, on this project. And of course, I'll be supporting this resolution.
Hey, thank you. Councilmember Hamilton, sorry. Are there any speaker cards for consent?
Sorry, Mr. Mayor.
Are there any speaker cards for consent? Councilmember Medina, let's see what about, we'll go to action after.
Got it, got it, got it. Thank you. So yes, thank you and thank you, Councilman Hamilton, because we have to tell the public of, of these type of projects because otherwise they're not going to really know until the construction either is at their door or they get the notice. This is a $15 million investment in the avenues. My question for staff is the majority of this work is sewer. There, there's a couple segments of water that are getting replaced between First Avenue and Second Avenue and then over, that's, is it Easton? Yeah, an Easton. So just wanted to ask, the water's not being replaced because why? It's probably not as old because what we're, what we do now is when we replace the sewer and systems is that we repave the whole street. And I know a number of people have been asking me like, hey, you know, our side of town doesn't get, you know, much money spent in it. And it's like, you just got to hold on. Tonight, we're going to be talking about it. All the streets other than First and Seventh will be paved from San Bruno Avenue all the way to the southern edge and end of the avenues. So just wanted to hear, the water is not being replaced and exactly why we're not doing it for, for the majority of, of the area.
Through the mayor, I'll, I'll have to look into that and provide you with a response. It's, it's at a high level. It's, it's pretty much based on the kind of timelines and the conditions of the specific utilities, but for a more detailed response, I'll get back to you.
Sure. Great, thank you, thank you.
And, and thank you, everybody. And again, it's not, we're talking about it, we're voting for it. So it's in a resolution form and moving, moving forward if it gets approved. So with that, let's bring it back to council, see if we have any action on the items of consent.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the items on consent.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, Hamilton, second and Alvarez, to approve all of consent. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Thank you very much. Now we will move on to public hearing.
Hold public hearing and consider adoption of a resolution adopting an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration adopted for the 2020.
I'm sorry, can you, can we pause for a second?
Yes.
And I really apologize because I know it's a lot to read. So before you continue further, we're going to take a five-minute break and then return. We'll be in recess.
Everything happens so fast, sorry.
Review and serve vacation. An introduction, reading by title only and waiving further reading of an ordinance, entitled An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Bruno, amending Title 12 Land Use, Article III Zoning of the Municipal Code to create Chapter 12.245 Multi-Family Housing, Ministerial Review and Finding Such Actions Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act.
Thank you very much. With that, appreciated, City Clerk, and we're going to turn over on the Director of Community Development for the staff report, please.
Mr. Mayor and members of the City Council, I'm Peter Gilligan. I'm the Community Development Director, and I'm presenting the housing element and related actions. We are splitting this agenda item into agenda presentation into two, and so the clerk has only had to read the first part at this point. So we're first going to go through the housing element, the ministerial ordinance, then conclude that part, have public comment, questions from council and action, and then come back and do the rezone sites, and it's public comment and questions and action. So for Part One, the objective is adoption of the resolutions and ordinances related to the environmental review of the housing element, as well as the readoption or adoption of an amended housing element, as well as the amendment to the municipal code for a ministerial review process. We'll start with the housing element itself. At the high level, this is part of the general plan. It is required by the state. It has a certification process where the state has to approve it, and the current cycle that we are in started in January of 2023. In January 2023, the City Council adopted our six-cycle housing element, and it was submitted to HCD or the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state level. Comments were received in March. I purposely chose red, and I purposely am sizing the box, in my view, appropriately. We had major needs for additional information and more commitments in our programs and As we worked through a recommendation on how to respond, we had a joint study session with council and Planning Commission in October of 2023. At the high level, there was a recommendation that the sites we had identified and that were adopted in the January version of the housing element were good, and we just needed to give a lot more analysis and justification of those sites, but that the program and the commitments needed a lot more. And a set of programs was shown at that October joint session that the council and Planning Commission endorsed. So at that time, we worked with Veronica Tam and Associates, a well-regarded housing consultant firm. We worked to address HCD comments and resubmitted. That ended up being March 2024, ended up taking a little longer than we thought it would be, and then we got comments back in May of 2024. Much fewer comments, much smaller scale, smaller scope. So it was major progress made. Then we came back around, addressed HCD's round of comments again, or attempted to, and resubmitted in July. We got some feedback in early August. The feedback was they still wanted some changes and expanded program and actions. And in the month of August, we were able to have a back-and-forth that resulted in, on Friday, we received the magic letter that says, "HCD is pleased to find the revised draft housing element, including additional revisions meets the statutory requirements of the state housing element law." That's the, not the formal certification, but the certification saying you're there. We just have to go through the final steps. So we're very pleased with that. So as noted, from SASS perspective, we think there are two main parts of the housing element. There's the Regional Housing Needs Assessment, or the RENA, and the Sites Inventory, which is basically the map of where we're saying that housing is able to go. And then there's the goals, programs, and actions that list what the city is going to do over the eight-year planning period in order to address all the housing issues in the city. So I'm really only going to touch on these areas. This map's a lot easier to see in the document itself, but it generally shows, these are the housing element sites. They're pretty much all along the transit corridors. These are basically the same sites that the council saw in the adopted version in January. Our total RENA hasn't changed. It's 3,165 units. After you account for projects that have already been approved or credits we get to take on the projected number of ADUs, we have a remaining RENA of 2158. So we need a sites inventory that provides for at least that much. Our sites inventory provides 2,500 units, which has a healthy buffer, which is what the state encourages, and was also the council direction earlier in the housing element process. So overall, sites inventory is in very good shape. Shifting to the goals and programs and actions. Again, this is going to be the real work over the eight years. There are four goals. There are programs within each goal. There are actions within each program. Basically, the changes we made based on the endorsement of council in October of 2023 to the actions and programs and actions were pretty much accepted by HCD. They did want some more. They wanted more commitments in some areas, but we didn't have to add any goals. We didn't have to add any programs. We did have to add a couple of actions, a handful of actions, to each of the goals. But overall, we, from my perspective, the actions we had to add that council didn't see in October of 2023 are relatively modest, in our opinion. I'm going to go through some of the notable ones. These are basically the ones that you're going to see over the next eight years. This is out of the staff report as well. The ones that are bolded are part of the agenda item we have. We have the program and action number. We have a brief description and the timeframe it's supposed to be. The items that are underlined, or the portions of items that are underlined, changed since October of 2023. So for the things that council's going to see, some of them are changed. In particular, on this table, HCD wanted us to have a program that said we are going to process the Tanfran project expeditiously. Because that's such a big part of the RENA, they didn't want, and they don't know every city is going to prioritize certain things a certain way. We put in a program that basically is only committing us to do what we're already partnering with the applicant to do, and that is to try to have the entitlement by the end of 2025. So it's an action that we committed to, but it's not actually an additional work that we weren't already doing. These are some more, again, along the lines of the state wanting to make sure. We have a program that talks about a ballot measure in 2028. The state wanted us to make a program, what if the ballot measure doesn't pass? What are we going to do? So we made a program saying, if it doesn't pass, we will start engagement with the community within six months of it not passing to figure out what we'll do next. It doesn't say what we're going to do, but it at least, in HCD's eyes, it shows, if it doesn't pass, we have committed, we will do something. That's what they needed to hear. This is the last of the list of the actions that are going to come eventually to council over the coming years. So that's actually the conclusion of the housing element itself. Now going to shift into one of the implementation measures, and that is a ministerial process. We have two programs, 3F and 9A of the housing element, where we commit to creating a ministerial process for certain types of multifamily projects. This was first introduced at the October 2023 joint study session, so this isn't new. And basically, the Planning Commission has seen the ordinance. They first saw it in February. They saw it more recently in August as well. And it's changed over time to reflect comments from the City Attorney's Office as well as HCD. In a nutshell, if you are a project in a zoning district that allows multifamily housing, and you meet all of our zoning rules, unless the state law lets you, preempts us on a particular rule, and you provide 20% of the units as lower-income units, then you can go through ministerial process, which means there's no hearings. There's already aspects of state law that require the city to let some of our housing projects be in this type of process. What we have in the housing element and this ordinance have committed to do is apply it to any multifamily housing project if they give the 20% lower-income units. Our standard affordable requirement is at 15%, and that's a mix of very low, low, and moderate. So it's, a developer would have to do more in order to get a process that will likely cost them less and save them a lot of time. Because most of our sites are on the transit corridor, we, as a city, would like developers to do mixed use. We don't want to discourage it. We can't require it. So we tried to put in this ordinance some type of allowances and incentives that if you have a certain percentage of the project as residential, you can still be a ministerial project and just go through, and not have to go to hearings, even if you're a mixed-use project. When this first went to Planning Commission, the threshold that staff suggested was at 75%. That led the Planning Commission to raise a couple of issues that they wanted the ordinance to address, and this is outlined in the staff report. In consultation with the City Attorney's Office, in order to, the best way to address the Planning Commission's recommendations, as well as align better with state law, was to actually lower the number of 75% to 50%. There is part of state law talks about mixed use can be, through, the state's ministerial process can be up to 50% non-residential and still be allowed. So we are recommending that this ordinance have that level of threshold, and that ordinance also has some attempts to have incentives related to the transportation impact and a reduction of fees. So that is the ministerial ordinance. Brings me to the conclusion of Part One of this agenda item. I need to touch on environmental review, because all land use actions need to have environmental review. And so the amended housing element is, was analyzed for whether it changed any of the impacts that were studied by the adopted sequo document in January. And the determination was, it did not. The sites are basically the same. The number of units we're talking about are basically the same. So an addendum to the mitigated negative declaration is recommended and is part of this package for the adoption of the housing element. The ministerial ordinance itself is exempt, based on categorical exemptions in the state code. So that takes care of the environmental review. The Planning Commission reviewed these items on October 6th. They unanimously recommended approval of the addendum, as well as the amended housing element and the ministerial ordinance with the modifications. And so the recommended action, and admittedly, this is hard to read, but this is a synopsis of what the clerk read. If there is a consensus among the council that, of support for the package, then a motion can be made to move the three items on the screen as read by the city clerk, or it can be done individually. And with that, that concludes Part One of the presentation. Staff recommends the council take public comment, and following that, we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much for the information, presentation, and hard work. Now we'll go ahead and open the public hearing on the housing element item. As City Clerk, is there any persons that wish to be heard on this matter?
I have no speaker cards.
Okay. Are there any City Council questions of staff or members of the public? But we didn't have any, so we don't worry about that, but for staff? None at this time? Okay. So if there are no questions, and there is none, and there's no one to speak in the pub, oh, I thought you were going to speak.
I have just a comment.
Okay.
Listening to you.
Well, why don't we go ahead and just do that, so we're still on the public hearing? If there are no other public comments, may I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Move to close the public hearing.
Is there a second?
Second.
Motion, Hamilton, Second, and Salazar, to close public hearing. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Yes.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Passes unanimously. Are there any comments from council members? Mr. Hamilton?
I just, the fact that we got to that, the magic letter is, we can't just kind of gloss over that. That is a massive milestone, and I just wanted to just pause for a second to acknowledge that, because it's a huge milestone to hit for you and for your team and for the entire organization. So I just wanted to stop to acknowledge that.
And any other?
I know we're not all the way at the end, but it's major enough to pause and almost clap.
Any other comments at this time? If not, I'll go ahead, and the chair will now entertain if there is a motion to proceed, and you're welcome to read the whole thing.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolutions as read by the city clerk.
Second.
Okay, and then we are going to take them all together?
Mayor Medina, I just, I want to point out, there's also an ordinance that was part of the motion.
I would like to amend my motion to adopt the resolutions and ordinances as read by the city clerk.
Yes, there will be the resolutions, which are three, and then adopt that ordinance, and thank you, and it has been introduced by Councilmember Hamilton, seconded by Councilmember Medina. And now I would ask if the city clerk could take a roll call.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Yes.
Mayor Rico Medina?
Aye. Passes unanimously. So, and again, thank you, Peter. So now we're going to go to the separate public hearing for items, for the next item. So if, at this time, what I'm going to do, I do have a conflict, and that's why they've been separated, so I am not going to be able to participate in this discussion of it due to the fact that my proximity to the project. So I will go ahead and recuse myself and turn it over to the vice mayor.
All right, so as the mayor leaves, City Clerk, if you could, please read the next item.
Hold public hearing and consider adoption of a resolution making findings and overriding the San Mateo City-County Association of Governments Airport Land Use Commission's determination of inconsistency with respect to proposed general planned land use diagram, U.S. Navy site and its environs specific plan, and zoning map amendments for sites 20, 21, and 22 of the 2023 to 2031 housing element sites inventory. Adoption of a resolution amending the general plan land use diagram to change certain land use designations to transit-oriented development, and amending the U.S. Navy site and its environs specific plan to establish a very high-density residential designation, and amending the specific plan land use diagram to change the designation of certain properties very high-density residential. Introduction, reading by title only and waiving further reading of an ordinance, amending the planned development district created by ordinance number 1087 to add multifamily housing as a permitted use on the 11.28 acre site at 1178 El Camino Real, and to amend the boundaries of the PD district created by ordinance number 1087 to include the 1.40 acre parcel at 1292 Huntington Avenue with multifamily housing as a permitted use. And introduction, reading by title only and waiving further reading of an ordinance to amend the zoning map to change the zoning designation of 1.40 acres at 1292 Huntington Avenue for the medium-density mixed-use district to the planned development district, and .57 acres at 1151 El Camino Real from neighborhood commercial district to high-density mixed-use district.
Thank you for reading all that. So this is a public hearing, and so we will open the public hearing and ask staff to present their report.
Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, this is Part Two of the housing element and related actions. The objective for this part of the presentation is for council to adopt resolutions and ordinances to approve associated general plan, specific plan, and zoning map amendments for the sites inventory of the housing element, as well as an override of the Airport Land Use Commission. So if you remember back to the prior presentation, we talked about the sites inventory map showing the entire city. The sites in question are all up in one corner of the city, near the Tanfran area, and these are sites 20, 21, and 22. And these were counted towards the sites where housing units could be built, but the current regulations don't allow what we are taking credit for, so we need to take actions to make it so the regulations allow it. And so in hindsight, maybe we should have made these as four sites. In the housing element, we made them as three. The Tanfran site and that vacant parking site kind of across the street on Huntington, we have categorized as part of Site 20, where about 1,000 units are to be allowed. And then there's Site 21 and 22, which are, is the pet hospital and dental office on El Camino, right across from the Tanfran site. So in order for the housing element that was just amended, the amended housing element that was just adopted to be certified, we have to complete these rezone actions. And you'll see throughout the slides, rezones in quotes, because in some cases, it's a general plan land use update, which is technically not a rezone. In some cases, it actually is a rezone. The state lumps it all together into rezone action, so we're calling it that, as far as this item goes. As was read, there's a lot of different actions that have to be taken simply to make these sites allow the housing that we want it to. Some of the sites are in the Navy-specific plan. Some are in the Tanfran planned development. Therefore, some need the specific plan amendment, some need us to amend the general plan, and some need us to change the zoning map. But altogether, all the actions that are in the resolutions and ordinances you have in the staff report are simply what's necessary in order to make our maps allow what we need to allow. The most significant, arguably the most significant part of this action is an override of the ALUC. And the ALUC, as I mentioned before, is the Airport Land Use Commission, and the San Francisco International Land Use Compatibility Plan, or the SFO ALUCP, has a noise contour map, and all of these sites are in the 70 to 75 decibel noise contour, which the plan says is incompatible to have housing there. This was known when ABAG identified the potential sites that the city had where housing could go. Therefore, when ABAG figured out how its number, its RENA number, was going to be spread amongst all the communities in the ABAG area, ABAG didn't take out these type of areas. And so while we have one agency that's saying, hey, our plans say this is incompatible, we have other agencies saying you should put housing next to BART stations. So this is an understandable conflict. We understand that, according to other agencies, this is not aligning with their plan, but the process allows the council to override the Airport Land Use Commission, and the council did that in January of 2023. When the council adopted the housing element, the six-cycle housing element, an ALUC override was included in that. And now, because we are actually changing the general plan land use maps and the zoning maps and specific plans to allow it, we need to do an override at this time as well. But it's basically the same override. So in March, the ALUC provided the city with a determination that the rezone actions are inconsistent with their plan, which admittedly, we expected. And there's a two-step process for the city to do an override. Council took the first step on April 9th, where the council adopted findings and declared an intent to override. There's then a time period before the actual action is able to be taken. The concept is that provides agencies the opportunity to provide comments, to make their case. We received comments from both SFO, as well as Caltrans. They, in many ways, are basically the same issues. There's no question we are in the noise contour. There's no question that we will need to provide, or the developer will need to provide, higher level of noise installation on these units. There's also no question that if a resident chooses to open a window, they're choosing between, as opposed to have internal ventilation, they're going to choose to take the noise instead of not having the noise. From the city's standpoint, we think that is a reasonable approach, and therefore, we are recommending approval of the override. And that is the first of the items that the clerk read for this part. On environmental review, again, these, all of these sites are the same exact sites that the mitigated negative declaration, which council just adopted an addendum to, already analyzed. So the environmental review has been complete. The Planning Commission reviewed the actions on the rezone sites on August 6th as well, and recommended approval of all of them. And so the recommended action, and we have two slides for this, just because there's so much text, adopt a resolution overriding the ALUC, that needs four positive votes. Adopt a resolution amending the general plan land use diagram. Adopt a resolution amending the general plan land use diagram, adopting an ordinance amending the planned development P-D zoning district, and adopting an ordinance amending the zoning map. And I want to correct myself, I should have bolded something on the second item here. The second block is amending the general plan land use diagram and the U.S. Navy site and its environs. That text is up there, I just did not highlight it, so I apologize for that. So those are the actions for this round. Again, the ALUC override needs four votes. And again, if council is comfortable with the whole package, you can make a single motion of all the resolutions and ordinances as read by the clerk, or these can be taken as separate actions. So that concludes the staff presentation. We recommend you take public comment, and then we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Director Gilli. Are there any public speakers on this topic?
I have no speaker cards.
Thank you. Seeing that there are no speakers, we can move forward with closing the public hearing, if there's a motion for that.
Move to close the public hearing?
Second?
I have a motion and a second, and I believe this will also require a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
And Mayor Rico Medina is recused.
Okay, thank you, so that passes. Okay, so we'll bring it back to council for questions or comments. Are there any questions for staff?
Comments?
Or comments?
Yes. Again, thank you very much, it's been a long road to get here. This is something that is, anytime it's near the airport flight path, we're going to be dealing with this, you know? Noise and development kind of don't mix, and we have to do what we need to do. So I thank you for the report, and I look forward to the vote.
Just a brief comment. You will recall when we first talked about the override, I shared that the discussion at the ALUC on this was lively. And one thing that's happened since then is, we've been, it's actually part of my committee report out for later, we discussed how these processes are in conflict, and we're going to see if there's any way that we can go back to A-BAG to try to get them to be a little bit more mindful of all of the various airport things and all of that, so that we can try to reduce the number of overrides, because the number of overrides that we're seeing is just ridiculous, you know? Just in my short term on the ALUC, we've done like five of them, between South City, San Bruno, and Millbrae. And then actually, we just, there's probably going to be one, there was actually just one in San Carlos for the San Carlos Airport, so it's just happening all over the place. So just wanted to share that, and I'm absolutely, even though I voted that this did not meet the standards, because that was my job as an ALUC person, I'm happy to vote for the override, and when I put on this hat.
Thank you.
Yes, thank you. I just want to recognize the hard work of the staff, CDD staff, and future congratulations for the certification from HCD. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. So if we're done, I do not have any questions or comments. I'll also offer my gratitude to staff for getting us here, I know it wasn't easy. I was on a part of a delegation that went up to Sacramento to talk to the lawmakers up there about a number of things, and the approval process for these housing elements was one of the things that we discussed, and it was acknowledged that that department wasn't exactly the easiest to work with, and so I do appreciate the patience and all the work that went into doing this. So we have two resolutions and two ordinances, is there any interest in splitting those up? And if there isn't, I will entertain a motion to approve those.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the resolutions and ordinances as read by the city clerk.
Thank you.
Second?
And we have a second, and we'll take a roll call vote for this, please.
Councilmember Alvarez?
Aye.
Councilmember Hamilton?
Aye.
Councilmember Marty Medina?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Salazar?
Aye.
And Mayor Rico Medina is recused.
Thank you, and now we'll wait for the mayor to return to the dais. All right, thank you very much, Vice Mayor. Now we'll move on to item eight, council committee report outs, and I already heard in the other room, Mr. Hamilton, you have one.
Through the mayor, we have one more presentation.
Oh.
Item 7B.
You know, I did not, I didn't turn, I turned the page too quick, my apologies. Well, I would not have you stay this long and then not. Thank you.
Sure, item 7B, consider introducing, reading by title only, and waiving a further reading of an ordinance entitled, "An Ordinance of the City Council of the City of San Bruno, Amending Article III, Zoning of Title XII, Land Use of the Municipal Code for Minor Amendments Related to Modifications, Temporary Use Permits, and Architectural Review, and Fighting Such Action Exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act."
Good evening, mayor and council members. In this presentation, I'll describe the staff report and attachments included in this packet, and I'll provide background information highlighting what led us here, followed by a detailed discussion of these proposed minor amendments. The conclusion will end with staff's recommendation, and afterwards, we recommend public comment, questions, and deliberation. So the objective for this meeting is for the city council to introduce an ordinance with staff-recommended amendments to the municipal code. The community development department identified these three code sections with minor amendments are recommended. So let's dive into the background. Back on March 12th of this year, the San Bruno City Council introduced an ordinance aimed at streamlining planning permit processes and making minor revisions to the land use subdivision and zoning sections of the municipal code. During this meeting, councilmember Medina expressed concerns about the temporary use permit process for construction yards. In response to these concerns, staff recommended deferring this portion of the ordinance amendment for a future hearing date and proceeding with the rest. On April 9th, city council adopted the remaining amendments, which went into effect on July 1st of this year. Following the adoption, staff identified the need for further amendments to the two other code sections shown on the previous slide. These amendments were presented to the Planning Commission on August 6th, where a resolution was passed recommending approval. So I want to dive into section 127830, which is a modifications section. This section details the process for requesting changes to approve planning permits. So let me cover the difference between minor and major modifications. So minor modifications are approved administratively. This is for small changes that do not significantly alter the project's design or operational aspects. Major modifications require approval from the original decision bodies, so that could be the Planning Commission or the city council. And this is a longer, more costly process, this is for significant changes that alter key design and operational elements. Currently, any change to a condition of approval requires a major modification. Staff proposes allowing minor adjustments to conditions, such changes to construction milestones to be classified as minor modifications for administrative action. The proposed amendments provide flexibility by allowing the community development director to approve minor modifications, provided that they are consistent with the original findings. And major modifications would be redefined to include changes that impact key design features or approved site plans, ensuring that the project remains consistent with the original findings. So that's for modifications. Moving on to temporary uses. So after March 12th, this staff discussed the temporary use permit process for construction yards with the city attorney office and police department. The proposed amendment that you're seeing in the packet today would require applicants obtain a temporary use permit valid for up to one year, with possible extensions granted by the community development director. Staff believes that the director is in the best position to impose and enforce conditions on temporary construction yards, including revoking the permit if conditions are violated. The recommended temporary use permit process for construction yards would result in less processing time and costs. Therefore, staff recommends adopting the amendment as proposed on March 12th. And then lastly, is the architecture review permits required section in 12200 of our municipal code. The ordinance amendment introduced back in March altered this code section. The original intent of the ordinance amendment was that single-family residential projects proposing a floor area ratio of 0.55 to 0.62 would require an administrative architecture review permit, while those exceeding the floor area ratio of 0.62 require Planning Commission approval for their architecture review permit. However, the adopted ordinance that went into effect on July 1st mistakenly stated that an architecture review permit was only necessary if the floor area ratio exceeded 0.62. The proposed amendment in this attached ordinance introduces, clarifies the floor area ratio requirements for an architecture review permit, and we want to note that staff has changed the proposed language approved by the Planning Commission. The revised language that we see on this slide here simplifies and accurately reflects the original intent of the ordinance amendments. And as for environmental review, this proposed ordinance amendment is exempt from CQ requirements as it does not have the potential for causing significant effects on the environment, and the proposed amendment will be presented to city council, again, at a future hearing date for adoption. So with that, our staff's recommendation is to introduce the ordinance as read by the city clerk, and we are happy to answer any questions after the public comment.
Thank you very much for the presentation and information. Any questions from colleagues on the presentation this evening? Any speaker cards?
I have no speaker cards.
Thank you. Any comments or action from colleagues? Vice Mayor?
I'll make a motion to...
Sorry.
Councilmember Medina?
I have a couple of concerns about the temporary uses. And it primarily goes that I don't see the enforcement, and I don't want to have to call that out, but if somebody were to drive by and look where the construction yards are, they would see a mess. And so, I want some assurances of how these sites are being inspected, and perhaps maybe a requirement that a sign be placed on the facility that has a phone number of who to call, from the property owner and from staff, that if there's a concern about the status of, or the condition of the property, then somebody needs to call. I really wish that, you know, people would take care and respect the neighborhood when they put construction yards in, but construction yards don't make money. They don't increase, they could increase production, but keeping them neat and orderly isn't, doesn't happen naturally. So I would like to see what the teeth are in this approval process, that there is some required inspections, and on those inspections that do cost time for our staff, they are charged to the property owner or leasing, so that this happens on a regular basis. It shouldn't have to be called in by the public, and all anybody has to do is go down San Bruno Avenue, and the construction yards are in poor shape. They've been in poor shape almost from the get-go. So I have a problem when this first started, that it would go and not come to the council because we don't have enough say in how the neighborhood looks when a construction yard goes into business, whether it's owned by, whether it's being used by the city, or for a city project, or for a private project. We've had a construction yard along Huntington for years now, and the fencing, it looks like something out of a wasteland at times, where the screening is just floating by, and it just needs additional teeth in making sure that the property is being properly maintained. So I'd like to, I want to be able to say yes, but I want to see the improvement, and how could we structure it to where it is more compliant?
So the, to answer that question, I have to start with where the regulations were prior to July 1, and then as of July 1. So several years ago, council adopted an ordinance that took away the temporary use permit of construction yards, therefore, the only way to enforce was to prove a nuisance. Proving a nuisance is more difficult than proving you don't have a required permit. So the whole intent of the process is to put back the requirement to have the temporary use permit, so that instead of spending so much time for our code enforcement staff trying to make the case for there being a nuisance, all code enforcement has to demonstrate is, they don't have their proper permit, and that's a violation, and we're able to do something about that. So, in all fairness, all comments about existing yards, that's why we brought this forward in the package that was intended to be adopted and go into effect in July. So we pulled this piece out of the package, and had conversations with the code enforcement expert of RWG, as well as our police chief and our code enforcement staff. We talked about the situation, and we ran through the which process is going to give us the best ability to enforce. And it's the opinion of RWG, our code enforcement staff, and community development, that the language before you gives the city the most leverage and ability to enforce, because we can be, the way the ordinance is laid out, if there is a, if somebody gets a permit and they don't meet their conditions, we can have either a revocation hearing or a reconsideration hearing. A revocation would be, you're going to lose your permit. A reconsideration hearing is, well, we might just change some of the conditions, make some of them stricter, or what have you. The reconsideration part was added as part of the July update. Reconsideration is done by the level that would do the approval. So if council approved the temporary use permits, reconsideration couldn't happen unless that came back to council, and that takes longer. And that takes longer. So the, the idea of having it at the administrative level means if a construction yard is not meeting the expectations, we can quickly, admittedly, we will give them a chance to operate appropriately. But if they don't follow up on it, we can schedule administrative hearing anytime. And, and we intend to in, in the conversations that we've had. So I, I can understand the perspective that you've seen poor enforcement over the past, over, over recent years. But until this gets going, it, it, ask that you give this approach a chance to see how this works. Because if, if, if it doesn't work and we have to, have to raise it up or add more to it, we can do that. But, but our, our initial thought is the, the folks who are going to follow the rules or try to will benefit from a streamlined process. But the fact it's administrative actually gives us a lot of leverage for those who aren't playing by the rules. So it's strategically laid out and it's purposeful in that manner. And again, we would ask that it be considered in, in this form and we could come back with updates, see how it works out and adjust it if, if necessary over time.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah, please.
And I'm all for that. I'm all for, I'm all for efficiency. It's just that my concerns, when we first talked about taking this decision out of the council's hands, I feel like it's the same, being that there's, there's non-compliance. And so I'm willing to, to say, okay, we're going to do this, but I want to see more results because I'm not seeing these yards being adequately maintained during, throughout the project. And, but if you're saying you're going to do it, I would still ask if you could put a, a board up that allows the public to know, hey, you can call this phone number. And you could, kind of like how we do our projects, I don't know, it's a four-by-four board and the lettering has to be so big with the phone number of staff to contact and a phone number of the person operating the, the construction yard. And therefore, that information is real easy to get to, to everyone that is going to be looking after the property. That's better than what we have now. So I, if that's okay, I, I could support it. Thank you.
Can I just clarify? Are you saying have, so there's a job site, construction site to have the number, the name and number of, of someone to call that is operating that?
Yes.
So the only, what I'm trying to think is a public person, a public member calls and says, I've called three times, they've done nothing. But then the city doesn't know that. And, and so I was just trying to think of a way to kind of consolidate it.
Right. So both numbers? So like, you don't have to call the city to get them to comply if like, oh man, I forgot, I left the gate open or, or it got a little windy and we, but you could have both numbers. Kind of like the rack had both numbers of the project manager and the, the construction manager so that you can call them both if you'd like. It'd be nice to only call one, but sometimes one doesn't answer, right? But anyhow, I, I think, I think you, I think staff is getting, getting the point. And if we can get better compliance, that's the whole point. Thank you.
Councilmember Hamilton.
So I won't go back through all the same comments I made back in, in March. I, I, I don't think council should be part of the, of the process because of, because it would slow things down when we need to do enforcement. But I'm also concerned that, that, to make sure that that enforcement takes place. So assuming we pass this tonight, what would be the, what would be the process and the timelines for going out to all of the existing construction yards that we have in San Bruno and saying, hey, well, you need a permit and you have X number of days to get your, to apply for it and all that? So how does, how is that going to work?
So if, if this is introduced at this meeting and if the adoption happens on the 10th of September, which would be when we would bring the adoption, then it would go into effect in about October 10th, plus or minus a day. I would want to consult with the attorney's office as to whether or not we can apply this to something, to a use that already started. If we can, we, we will. If we cannot, then we would be focused just on newly created ones. And we could have that answer, you know, provided in the next, in the next digest. But we can, we can take the steps of, of making sure all parties know about the new process and, and what the enforcement is going to be. And the intent from, from all parties, the code enforcement as well as, as community development is owner, operators who are working hard to meet the regs, we're going to work hard to support them and help them understand and get through. And then there's some that don't. And, and we're going to use the regulations that we have in order to protect the people around that individual or that group. So it, it, it's going to be a priority.
Got it. Okay. So I mean, I, I am a little bit concerned that there's a possibility that we wouldn't be able to apply these retroactively because we have some bad actors now. And, you know, everything that, that councilmember Medina is saying is absolutely true, especially along Huntington, especially along San Bruno Avenue. So, you know, eagerly await the, the, what the, the city attorney has to say about, about that because not, not having the teeth to be able to go after what's happening that's bad right now, where we can go out and look at it, is problematic for me. But not passing this won't help that. So I'm going to, I'm going to be voting for this.
Any other questions, comments from colleagues this time? If not, is there any action?
Through the chair, since this has already been delayed six months, I will make a motion to introduce the ordinance as read by staff.
Second?
Motion Salazar, Second Alvarez. Do you approve as read? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? It passes unanimously. Now we will move on to item, and thank you. Thank you for staying. Now we'll move on to item eight, council committee report outs. Councilmember?
Yes.
Hamilton.
So I just have a brief report out from the last ALUC meeting. We looked at the daily city draft housing element and we unanimously determined that the city, of daily city's draft housing element, housing element update was consistent with two minor conditions that they, they won't have any problems with. And then we had a, we had an update from the Caltrans Division of Aeronautics and that was the discussion that I mentioned earlier when we were talking about whether we can amend our, amend our handbook and work more closely with AVAC so they don't recommend sites that, that constantly get overrides. So that's my report out. Thank you.
Thank you. Are there any others? Mine's just very quick. I had an emergency services council, finance admin, and will be going to the full body in September. And that is to update and have every jurisdiction within the county vote on the new joint's power agreement because it has shifted over, out of the sheriff's department. And so it's just to update the language and getting more with the times of today's technology. So with that, if there is nothing else, we will move on to item nine, comments from council members. First item, councilmember Hamilton, direct staff to add short-term paid parking option in the city parking lots and green zones in downtown, in the downtown. Councilmember Hamilton.
Thank you. So obviously we've talked a lot about our, our paid parking program in our downtown since adopting it and rolling it out early this year. I've had many, sometimes lively discussions with our city manager during our one-on-ones on this topic. And I, I fully aware and fully understand that the, you know, the intent was to roll it out, let, gather data for six months and then come back and, and make tweaks as needed. And, you know, we identified fairly early on some, you know, some, some oversights during the rollout. And one of those was, was addressed by adding a short-term, short-term option to street parking, which was welcomed and I'm glad we were able to do that. But there are two other items that I, that I do think need to be addressed. And I am looking for concurrence from my colleagues to ask staff to, to look at those. And those are to extend the short-term paid option that we have on the street into the city parking lots. That's the first one. And the second one is green zones. And I'll talk about each one briefly here. The, regarding the short-term paid parking option for the lots, especially on the, in the, the, the large city lot, the number just escaped me which one it is. I think it's lot four behind, behind Mexicana Market and Napa Auto Parts and all of that. That, that lot in particular has a lot of folks who come to those stores for a very short amount of time. And, you know, the, the, the common, the common refrain is I want to duck into Mexicana to buy an avocado. And it just seems silly to have to pay for two hours of parking to duck into the market to buy one avocado. And so looking for, looking for an option, I understand, you know, if we do something similar to what we did on the street where it's, where it's cash only, whatever, you know, I just want us to look at that to see where it would make the most sense. And I think lot four would be, would be a place to make, where it makes more, more sense. But since this would be a short-term option, doing it across all of the, all the lots would, would be preferable to give people, to give folks that option to be able to just, you know, pay for a shorter amount of time because they don't need two whole hours. And then the second piece of it is the, is green zones. So originally my intent was it's the, and when I, I think I said 400 block earlier when I mentioned Mexicana, that's a 500 block. On the 400 block of, of San Mateo Avenue, there are no green zones. We, we, council implemented green zones on the 500 block near the Starbucks. I actually, you know, just this, just last week lucked out, going, going down to Mexicana to buy, I think I did buy an avocado, but I bought a few other things and was able to duck in, was able to pull into one of the green zones in front of there, which was, they're usually full, but, but I got lucky and was able to duck in and, and make my purchases and get out. They don't, we don't have that option on the 400 block. And there's, there's a, there's a, the Hawaiian barbecue, the Hawaiian restaurant has a lot of takeout, so a lot of, a lot of, of delivery services are looking, looking to be able to pull in and go, go grab their deliveries and go out. There's, 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 there's a couple of markets there. There's the, there's a, there's a cafe. There's all kinds of short-term uses there. And I think having at least one green zone on that block would help the situation. And I'm fully aware that any green zone we add is taking that space out of circulation for generating revenue. So I'm not saying to let's go crazy and put green zones all over the place. I'm just saying let's be strategic and put a, put a couple where we, where they make most, the most sense. So I think the four, on the, on the, the 400 block on the street. And we could also consider doing green zones in, in, in the, in lot four behind the, behind the market and the, the, the auto parts store and other places where people need to be able to duck in and out quickly. So I'm hoping for, I'm hoping for a majority in concurrence for this and I will stop there.
Thank you. Thank you for your comments. Appreciate it. Are there comments from colleagues or questions? Maybe we should have questions for clarity or if there was that on the, on the ask questions. What, what councilmember Hamilton, because maybe you might want to ask him, well, what did you mean by this or this so that we're all on the same page?
Yeah, I, I will support that.
Okay. Questions to councilmember Hamilton, not, not comments or statements?
Well, I think we did a study for the yellow zone and the green zone back in 2019, a request, and that was four to 500 blocks where the Starbucks area is. It was just a study, but it was never brought to a, a resolution of some sort. We did, I, I researched this when, during the public comments a while back from Rebecca. But we did study that. Yeah.
Through the chair, I believe that that ultimately resulted in the green zones that we have on, on the 500 block now. So we did, we did, you know, there are, there are four green zones in front of the Starbucks direct, there's two directly in front of, and then two across the street in front of the Chopstickers Lab. And then we, there's also a couple of green zones were put down near Grand Leader Market on the, on Angus. I believe that those came out of that, that original study back then, if I, if I'm not mistaken. But so this is, this is looking to do this, to basically do the same thing on the, on the 400 block. I'm not saying to add, I just described six different green zones and I'm not saying to put six green zones on the 400 block. But, you know, we, we at least need one.
And my question maybe, and if not, a good staff, but for the green zones, isn't there already a stipulated process through the TSPC? So are we saying to circumvent that and then bypass what others have had to do or are in the process of doing?
Yes, because we've, we have a precedent for that because the, the zones that we put, that we did put in front of the Starbucks and all of those, those didn't, those were not, you know, specific ones that went through that process. Those were ones that we looked holistically at the, at the, at the parking downtown and decided to put those in. The other reason that I'm interested in doing it in that regard versus, and having us kind of look holistically at it rather than wait for a request through the process is that maybe the, maybe the, maybe where it gets requested isn't the ideal place. And we're, you know, we're trying to manage our, manage our parking in the downtown in a holistic manner. And I would rather have staff be able to look and look at the, look at the data, look at the, look at the area and say, you know what, based on all the uses, it would make sense to put one right there rather than wait for, wait, wait for a, a specific request to come through. And then, I was on the TSPC. It's a long process. We would be waiting months to get all the way to the end.
And then with the different time, you know, not, not get into the weeds. It's just a matter of bringing it back. So I'll, thank you. Vice Mayor.
And I would just ask, if a study was done and we allocated spaces based on that study, what, what do you believe has changed in that time that would necessitate more?
What has changed? Or what is, like, in other words, why didn't, why?
In the past three, I mean, it's only three, four years old that we did it. And so what has changed between the time that we did the study and implemented those changes to now that would, that would require us to either revisit it or add additional green zones?
Well, the biggest change was that we introduced paid parking. So the, the, a lot of the, a lot of the, the feedback that we're getting, especially from, from multiple stores on the, on the 400 block, is that there are, people have short-term needs to just be able to pull in, go into, go into the store, you know, there's, there's a smoke shop there, there's the, there's the...
the, you know, like I mentioned, for if you're a, if you're a delivery driver picking up food at auto market and all of that, and having to pay, you know, a buck and a half for an hour's worth of parking, or now we have, we do have a shorter, shorter term, is, isn't necessarily the best, the best outcome. So, it just, it seems that the green zones are not spread out across the downtown. They're kind of, you know, a couple of spots. And I, and I think that we need to look at it, adding just one onto the 400 block.
Okay. And it seems to me that the, the green zones at one point were intended to provide some sort of a mitigation to that, that there was an area that had a faster turnover that would be available. And the meters are intending to do the same thing. So, I wonder if we're not only allowing people to circumvent our newest mitigation method by adding more green zones. And the concern I also have with the green zones is that they make sense near certain types of businesses, but businesses change. And then, you know, they may not make sense anymore. And so, I'm, without a lot of data to show that, you know, that we really didn't implement the last study correctly, or that, you know, parking patterns have changed. And I think that's why we all decided at the last discussion that we really did want to wait and get some, some real data on how this works. I mean, I wouldn't be opposed to adding green zones if they make sense. But I think right now it's kind of speculative. And I wouldn't want to move down a path that's contrary to something that we're trying to do that's a little more holistic in an approach to overall management. So, I'm not sure how far staff is away from bringing back some recommendations on changes to the, to the parking program. But I would hate to introduce more constraints than, than the ones that already exist. I think we're aware of a lot of the issues, and definitely there are no shortage of issues. But I certainly wouldn't want to confound that by trying to introduce other changes in the meantime. So, I guess I would, I would ask staff if we are, you know, within a reasonable timeframe of expecting a report back. And then I would, I would ask that we wait for some of that information to come back.
I'll take that as a question?
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. Mr. Mayor, members of the council. So, you know, what we had set out, what we had asked the council was to give us up to six months to gather the data. And that six months would hit September 30th, right? We started April 1st. And so, in October, we would gather the data and probably come to October or early November with the, "Here's what the data shows." You know, again, reminding you what your objective was in trying to create the downtown paid parking program. You know, we are or we are not achieving what the objective is. The council wants to change the objective. That's fine. Are there tweaks to the program that the council's interested in seeing? Are there tweaks in the program we think we should be looking at? I think green zones, loading zones is probably something worthy of consideration since it was not considered an original plan from what I understand. I do have Chief Johansson standing by. He is unfortunately sick today, but he is, he wanted to be around for this conversation. Ryan, do you, do you have any thoughts or comments or reactions to any of this for the moment?
Sorry for my Spartan attire, but I'm nursing a back injury, and so it's difficult to get changed into appropriate clothing. Just, just a couple of points. One on the green zones is that a green zone in San Bruno is a 24-minute parking zone. If we put 20-minute parking available at the kiosks, which we've already done midway through this first six-month period, there's already short-term parking available all over San Mateo Avenue. Therefore, I would extrapolate that the actual ask here is for free parking in different places on San Mateo Avenue. This is a discussion of cost, not a discussion of parking availability or parking time. And I think it's important to call that out as what it is, because the only difference between a green zone and a white curb downtown right now is that to park for 20 minutes at the white curb, you have to pay, and to park at a green curb, you do not, which really was only initially the case because we didn't have the ability to charge for such a short period of time as 24 minutes, or to differentiate those zones within the kiosk database system. It's not that they necessarily should be free. So, I'm not sure that any serious consideration of green zones is properly placed, given the current objectives we've been given for this program. As far as long or shorter-term parking in the lots, I would simply highlight that I think this would involve council deciding that there is a change in the objectives that we were given in building this program in the first place, which, to clarify, from the 2019 study, was to drive longer-term parkers into the lots to facilitate shorter-term parking on the streets, which, by the way, as an early report that you will eventually get in November, the program is 100% succeeding at doing. Data proven, it is doing exactly what you told us to do. But if you provide short-term parking in the lots, cheaper, reason would tell us it's probably going to mean more shorter-term parkers in the lots, not necessarily consistent with the objective of driving longer-term parkers to the lots. I do understand that we look at this two-hour period and think, "Should I have to pay for two hours in order to go grab an avocado or an onion?" I think that perhaps it's a question of semantics. It is up to two hours for $1 in those lots. And we have discussed repeatedly the challenges of providing rates that are below the 75 cent price point that currently exists on San Mateo Avenue for 20 minutes. So, I'm not exactly sure what the rate and ask would be to create the shorter term. If you're simply going to do math and you want a 20-minute zone that is at the same relative rate as a dollar for two hours, that's not going to be, that's going to essentially be subsidized parking. So, I think it's important for council to know what, you know, that you're playing with a full deck and making that sort of a decision that if you want to subsidize parking in a number of spots, meaning that the city is essentially footing the bill for people to park there regardless of having a paid parking program, by all means, it would be appropriate direction. But I do think that from, from the input of the organization sort of running this at that point, that that would be my only early advice.
Through the mayor.
Vice Mayor, I think I'm good. Thank you. Thank you, Chief.
Yeah, just wanted to add, I'm probably downtown more than anybody here, if not everybody combined. I talk to the business owners almost every single day. People call me all the time. What has changed, Councilman Salazar, is parking meters. We have the parking meters now. We have a number of businesses that are relying on pickup. Hana BBQ, 30%, 40% of her business is pickup. And she's saying now it's hard for them to get in and out. If it's a green zone, you can only be there for 24 minutes, right? So, by having a green zone, that would make sure or improve the chances that that space is available, just like it's at Starbucks, which is subsidized free parking. Okay? Chief is absolutely right. We have subsidized free parking on every block, but not the 400 block. It's not fair. There's four free parking spots by Starbucks. But back in the day, we thought, you know, that would be convenient to kind of get people in and out. Put it right there at Starbucks. Put it at Grand Leader. In and out. Get your coffee. Get your sandwich. Get out. Well, for fairness, the businesses on the 400 block don't have that. In addition, the businesses on the 400 block, a couple of them don't even have back parking, a parking lot that's conveniently located. So, that would be Bessan's, One Love Cafe, Hana BBQ. Neela Market does have parking in the back. So, the effort to look into the green zones, I mean, we are, as the city manager said, April, May, June, July, August, we're at the end of the five months. So, what are we going to learn in six more months, one more month? Not too much more. What we're listening to our community, we're relying on data. We're not listening. The San Bruno Liquors, five minutes to get in and out. The Mexicana Market, maybe 15, because most times, you know, it's not just an avocado or an onion. There's a couple more other things. So, I think it's absolutely the right thing to do of putting a green zone. Or, this is going to sound outrageous, if we don't want to subsidize parking, then we get rid of the green zones, because it's 75 cents for 20 minutes. I got my hair cut today at my barber. I parked in front. It was 75 cents for 20 minutes. He's so generous. He gives, he comes with a bucket of quarters, a red, a red cup of quarters to encourage his customers to go ahead and do it. By the way, you have to use a quarter to push in the quarter. It doesn't just drop in, at least at that kiosk. So, for, for it to be fair and for us to get the turnover, there's also a music school right there. So, what, what happens if you have to drop off your kid for a violin lesson, and there's no parking because people are paying for it? Well, a green zone would help alleviate that. You could find parking in front of Starbucks. I don't know. It's like flipping a coin. Sometimes it's available, sometimes it's not. I think that the 85% that the chief is talking is being reached. There's no doubt. Those are facts. But the, the insensitivity about the people that go and shop in our downtown has been, was missed. Not, it's not a bad thing. It's just that we didn't think it through all the way through. So, I'm in favor of both of these two. I will be voting in favor of it. I think if it goes up one more month, then fine. It'll start a month sooner. But putting it in a green zone, it's kind of like, I don't know why they didn't do before, but I'm guessing is because it wasn't as busy as it was down there. We're having these successful businesses of wanting to have that turnover and accessibility to get in and out. And it's a little unique because that side of the block doesn't have any back parking available at all. Just a weird thing that happens in San Bruno sometimes, just the oddest things happen. So, that's my input for now.
Just one, one quick follow-up regarding, Vice Mayor was correct that the, the businesses change and, you know, we put in the green zones in front of, based on the businesses that existed then. Those same businesses still exist today, thankfully. And it's paint. So, you know, if there was a, if there was, if we put a single green zone on the 400 block, and then there was, I hope there's not, but if there was some, you know, big turnover in the businesses and that was, and it became no longer viable, then you'd come out with the gray paint and we'd take it out. So, you know, the earlier decision to put the green zones in was based on what was there. And this, again, I'm not asking for dozens of green zones all over the downtown. I'm asking for us to consider one on the 400 block and to consider potentially, you know, in key places in the, in the, in the lots as, as directed by the data that we're seeing.
Is there a certain distance that in order to accommodate the request for the green zone, because we have one now on the, on Starbucks that's within the 400, would it be, would it be fair to say that it would be on the other end of San Mateo Avenue? I mean, what's reasonable for, to get a good result for what you're trying to request to have additional green zone?
So, I mean, I'm not, I'm not asking for, you know, a specific spot. I would imagine that it would make the most sense and, and staff would be more qualified to be able to say, but that in the, in the middle of the 400 block. So, it would be, you know, halfway down the block, away from the corner where if you could then cross, if you then cross over Sylvan, where the, is where the Starbucks is, and the four green zones there. So, this is, you know, this is a ways away from that. And again, I'm just asking for one.
From, from a technical standpoint, the way the system is set up right now, can, is Laz equipped to enforce 24 minutes of parking?
Chief, can you hear that question?
Yes, I heard the question. And yes, they are. Additionally, now that we have created a short-term option, you could charge for parking in green zones. And so, you could then gain this benefit that's being sought here of creating a time restriction on how long a car can remain in a spot so that you have more turnover. But you could still not subsidize that by requiring the 75 cent payment to park in a 24-minute zone.
Right. Thank you. Okay. Yeah.
That was, my question was on the enforcement. I mean, obviously, we talked about other communities. You go to Burlingame, you go to San Mateo, and green is not free. You do pay. That's just the bottom line. Or you park further away from Broadway and you walk. So, there are options. So, that is, subsidizing it is a concern because right now it is, it is free, to be honest. Chief just told us that they, they could, if it were chargeable, they could regulate that to ensure. Because right now, do we truly think somebody's parking there for 20 minutes, 24? Or by the time they get back around, is it a little bit longer? Because right now it's free. So, I don't know how the green zones are really being effectively monitored and being utilized for what they were intended for. I think there's, there are some questions. You're asking, you kind of said Mexicana, Napa, then you said the 400 block, but then you're saying just the 400 block. And instead of us making a determination of where one should go, I think it should be based on, you know, some, some knowledge and some data. I, I think those are important things. And if we are going to change the objectives, I think we need to tell the staff that and say, "Okay, we told you here, and it's met. Now we want to change it." And it's hard once you change the goalpost, too. You know, you're, you're in the middle of play. You're getting down toward the finish line. And it's like, "Okay, we're going to move them." And we had said to staff, six months and what have you. So, the point of it is, is these are items that keep coming up. I just don't want us to compete. I know you were saying, and you would know, you served on TSPC, that the process is too long in order to get through that. Then maybe the process needs to be looked at. Maybe that's another thing, too, in the element of, "Let's look at, what is the process for a green zone?" I know somebody else asked, who's on the 400 block, and it's like, "Well, I won't learn." Okay. Well, there's a process. So, I think, you know, to look into something is fine, because to have that knowledge and that understanding. But I do think we do need staff to have that opportunity to say, "I am giving you this data from a proven number wise of what is transpiring, what we're seeing." And they have data. And so, I think that's important for us to come back with and then have a decision. Because, because I think that's what you're saying, not just say, "I, you want one on 400 block, period." I think you're saying, "Look, I want to look at the holistically green zones." I'm thinking that that's...
So, originally, and I, we made it, we, in discussing with the city manager, we made the comment to be more broad so that we weren't unnecessarily limiting our discussion. But originally, my council comment said, "Adding a green zone on the 400 block of San Mateo Avenue." So, and just to your comments, I understand everything you're saying. I, the only thing I would push back a bit on is that I don't believe requesting a single green zone on the 400 block is moving the goalposts for our, for our parking program.
I'm not saying that is. I'm saying when we talk about the whole of its entirety, you're talking about lots in the back, whether they had green zones, not green zones, whether there's a shorter time limit, the costs. You know, I also want to know, too, when we're looking at this stuff, and I'm just kind of getting off a little bit, maybe the attorney will chime in. But, you know, with the implementation of stuff, there's appeals. There is other things that are happening, administrative costs. Are we keeping up with it? Is it more than we thought? And I think that's where we were supposed to come back with some really hard data to say like, "Hey, folks, guess what? It's another 20 to 30-person hours a week that we hadn't thought of." So, I want to look at more in a, in a global fashion. I don't mind looking... I don't mind looking at it, bottom line. But I want to do it more in a real, driven, thoughtful process that we can say, if a decision's made is, here's why we did it, here's what's backing up why we did it, and if something else comes forward, this is, maybe it meets a criteria, right? It's just not, I want one thing. Because, I mean, I was thinking restaurants down at the other end, they don't have back parking lots either. They have a side lot, Mexican, A1, those type of, you know, they don't, they don't have those either. And sometimes you want to run in there and just grab something to go. So, anyway, that's it for, for me, and I'm sorry. Is there any other comments or questions?
About this now?
Oh, okay. And, can't see. Anything else?
I have nothing. I'm ready to vote.
Yeah. I'm just checking with everybody.
Yeah, thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna let you, if that's all right.
Yeah. So, I would like to make a motion to direct staff to look, to bring, to agendize adding a short-term paid parking option in the lots and adding green zones to the downtown. I'm going to leave it broad, but we can, you know, obviously, this discussion could get as narrow as we want.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. So, on the question, when you say direct staff, does that mean to do it or to bring the, it, it, we're, we're, we're going to be bringing it back in the future.
Yeah, we're going to, yeah, it has to be agendized.
There you go. Okay. Just want to make sure the expectations are not, all of a sudden I hear tomorrow...
I know our works.
Yeah, I know. I hear tomorrow from someone else that says, so when, when, when are you painting?
Nope. We are, we are requesting to talk about it.
Thank you. Through the chair. So, I would be willing to support this if we stipulated that these requests are taken in consideration of everything that's already in process and not sort of moved ahead of the rest of it. Because I know staff is already working on a big portion of it. There's, there's expectations that we're going to get this done in six months. And so, I don't want to derail the work that's happening right now, and I don't want to delay it any further than it needs to be. So, I think I would, I would be supportive of looking at these things, but not prioritizing them per se or...
I know, I think I understand what you're saying. And I, and that's, that is, that's reasonable. That's absolutely reasonable. I don't want to do that either. You know, like, you know, the, we want to see that, we want to see the, the data come back and we want to be able to have that conversation. So, yes, I think that's totally fine.
All right. So, yeah, it's, though staff understands that this, this would, this is an additional, we, we understand it's an additional request, but not one that should take precedent over what we're already, what the work product is already addressing.
I understand. Thank you.
Thank you.
I thought you were going to say more. City manager says yes, he understands. Thank you. There's a motion and a second on the question. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Passes unanimously. Other council members?
Oh, we have...
What?
Yeah, I'm going to just keep on going. So, I'll, I'll, I'll leave the, I'll leave Second Harvest for my colleague to talk about. So, this coming Saturday is our monthly pancake breakfast at the American Legion. Twelve dollars for adults, six dollars for kids. There's a, there's a, there's a raffle, what do you, what do you call it with the cards? That has been going on for a really, really long time, and there's a really small amount of cards to pick from for like a pot of over like two grand. So, that might, that might bring you down there to get a, to get a, to get a, to get some pancakes. So, please come and join us. It's a great event. Thank you.
Yes, and Tom really does a good job on the bacon. Yes, you do. Tomorrow at Second Harvest at Bel Air School, it's going to be warm. We need volunteers. If anybody can make it, that would be great. We're, we're at three, three hundred and fifty families will have food available to them. So, if you need food or if you know somebody, by all means, come on down or if you'd like to help. Arrive at 1:45 at Bel Air School, 3:50 and... Done. Thank you.
I know there's another item on the agenda, but since Councilmember Medina was excited to go after Councilmember Hamilton, I want to let Councilmember Alvarez go next and then I'll, I'll circle back around, get back on the agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'll make this quick. I just wanted to say something in response to the earlier public comments. I do want to encourage the public to visit our San Bruno website. Back in May, I think I requested the city manager and, and the staff to provide more information via our website, and, and they did a really good job. I believe that ninety percent of adults owns, owns a smartphone. They do Facebook, they do texts, they do everything on the smartphone. And the public can be, can be informed by just visiting our website. Everything is posted in our website, including the letter that was just posted today. So, you can read all the context or contents of the, of the letter. We do have public comments, and sometimes we do receive comments that, not complete detail that you can read in our website. And also, for the first time, I reported illegal dumping in our online services, and they do work. This is the first time I've ever used it. And we have a lot of online services that the city offers, so I encourage the, the public to utilize it and be informed. Thank you.
Thank you. Item B, update on the training exercise incident of May 21st, 2024 at the San Francisco County Jail, not San Bruno. I did, I'm, this is going to be my last report out, but in August, on August 2nd, 2024, a letter came out from the sheriff of San Francisco, who they are in control and own and operate the San Francisco jail that is near San Bruno, that is on county land. The important thing is, and I spoke to the sheriff, is that there was a couple legs to this. It was, one, as far as stopping permanently, not temporarily, but the investigation still is not concluded, and he's still working with that, and that's from our county and what have you. But he, he has, and it states here, I've come to the decision that we must be responsive to the community and reevaluate our training practices going forward. The San Francisco Sheriff's Office, SFSO, will not use active chemical agents in training exercises on the San Bruno, he calls it, jail grounds. While I feel that this is imperative for my staff to conduct and undergo training, it must never be done in a way that will pose harm to the community. So, I called him, I appreciated that. The second leg was also, I did follow it up about cadet training. That is another thing that they do, and he assured me via the phone that also that will be included in that as well, not just for those officers that are being, having to go through that training practice. The other thing is, is about communication. I can tell you, I've talked to San Mateo Department of Emergency Management, Dave, and they are working with and have been training some of the San Francisco sheriff personnel so that they could do the SMC alerts through our system that will notify residents. There's going to be a system into where they have a mile radius that will go out. Now, if you remember, SMC, let's say you're outside the mile and you want it. Well, you go in, you sign up for it, you put the address of the jail, and then what alerts that person may get within the mile, you can get as well. So, they also will be doing a campaign to encourage and, because you have to opt in, encourage folks to do that, and that will help alert folks via text or email when maybe something's upcoming so that the community is aware and isn't, isn't surprised. So, that will be happening as well. And the third thing was just being, shall we say, a partner, good neighbor. And so, next year, they're doing a hundred, I think it's a hundred and seventy-five, 75th anniversary, they may do something around the property of a barbecue invite to community. They may even explore, not in the jail, but they may even explore, and it's just talk next year, maybe even doing something around National Night Out. So, that is the three-leg approach that I've really tried to take, and I want to thank Ray Gusti and Jennifer Blanco from the school board who have worked with this, with the superintendent, the city manager, with our police chief. But I want to thank the sheriff, he is extremely responsive on that, and I just wanted to bring forward. And lastly, as, let's see, this is important. So, we will, when I say we, is the San Francisco sheriff will keep us abreast or whatever. In the meantime, to anyone seeking reimbursement for any direct out-of-pocket medical expenses, please use the email we have previously provided, sfsosbincidentmay21@sgov.org. So, there is an option and opportunity for those that may have that, and I think that helps to address some of the community's concerns, the schools' concerns. And I do want to thank going up there to be able to see it, and like I said, the sheriff going further to say no academies as well as with the regular law enforcement. Any questions or comments from colleagues or things that I need to find out more on?
That letter, I'm excuse me, that letter goes to the school as well or...
It doesn't say who it's, well, it's a letter to the San Mateo community neighbors. So, I can clarify with Tara.
Mr. Duffy, superintendent of the school.
He should have already received it, yes.
Okay. All right. That's great.
Yeah.
And on our city website to kind of follow up, that'd be great.
And so, I don't know where the letter, but anyway, I wanted to update the council, but I've been bringing this up, but I thought I wanted to solidify it because I think what we did is we kind of had an unfortunate, a very bad situation, but we've gotten some good resolve at it and hopefully going forward, better communication and a better partnership. With that, the only other thing from me is that I went and spoke at San Mateo High, well, it wasn't just like I just spoke, there was like thirty or forty of us. The superintendent this year, as you know, faculty all comes back together as one, and they kind of kick it off on a Monday when school starts on Wednesday, just to kind of get everybody together. The superintendent kind of figured, it was his third year as a superintendent, they were probably, the faculty was probably tired of listening to him. So, what he did is he encouraged and had us, he invited, there were four electeds, but there were school board members, there were students, there were faculty, there were parents. And at some point after he kicked it off, we all went onto the stage at the San Mateo High School District, and he has a new motto, ten-six-one. So, there are ten schools in the high school district. People are, you know, might try and figure out all the ten. There are six communities in which they reside, and in his world, there is one district, and it needs to be done together, and that everybody has an intricate role in it. So, basically, as each of us were introduced, we were to go to the mic, and he did not know what we were going to say, and then talk about what we thought the vision was and the importance, and then how we can do it as a collective unit and make progress and success for those to, as they have their high school career and reach their ultimate goal of their high school diploma. So, interesting concept, and from what I've heard from honest faculty, that they actually liked it and they appreciated, each had something different and unique. And in essence, I think the superintendent had a good outside-the-box moment that worked well for staff. So, that is it for me, and I guess congratulations to Ed and Tony from our San Bruno PD who are retiring after good years of service to our community. I'm not just going to use first names, but, and Tom, who's the new POA president, was there when I was up at Junipercera Saturday to see them and their significance, received their badge around their neck and then their hand badge for retirement. So, our thanks and appreciation from this community to them for their service to us. And so, with that, thank you, staff. Thank you, team. I'm sure everybody's still a little tired from this weekend, not Travis, of course, but I want to appreciate it. The city council is going to go into a closed session, and that's conference with labor negotiators. That agency designated representatives are myself and Councilmember Vice Mayor Salazar, and the unrepresented is the city manager. And so, we will now go into closed session. We do have to, counsel, we do have to come back out to conclude. So, at this time, we will go into closed session. So at this time, we will go into closed session.
Craving some culinary delights in Samiteo County?
You're watching San Bruno Channel 1 at HD Channel 10.
Good evening. Thank you. City Council has come out of closed session. There's no reportable action at this time. So therefore we will go ahead and adjourn this meeting to the next regular scheduled meeting, which will be September the 10th, 7pm here at the San Bruno Senior Center. With that meeting adjourned.